All right, call the meeting to order at six oh three. Uh, can we get approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion that we approve the agenda.
George, is there a second?
I guess I'll second.
Cara left for a second.
I I seconded.
Yeah, uh, no, she left for a second, I said.
I'm listening, I'm just making sure the children are alive.
Okay. All right, all those in favor approving the agenda?
Can we add anything to this agenda?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, um, any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Um, yeah, I, uh, I guess this was brought up by our town clerk about, um, adding information from our, um, report to the town report. Can we have a discussion about that?
Yep.
So Meredith, was that to the, uh, middle town?
Yeah, as far as I know, it's it's only Middletown. That's all I've been approached by, but, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess.
I mean, didn't, didn't they say in the past that we could do that, but they would charge us to do so?
Well, we'll talk about it if we're adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no issues with that. I mean, it would be a good night to do it. Uh, so, uh, under new business, we can just add.
Annual report?
Yeah.
Discussion or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other changes? All right, um, all those in favor of approving the agenda with the addition?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Uh, no public comment, no public here, I meant to say. Uh, approval of the warning, so everyone, um, did receive the warning and review it?
Yeah.
I, um,
There's one typo I saw.
What's that?
Uh, under Article One A, uh, there's an F missing. Moderator or should say for a term.
For a term, yes, okay.
Nice.
Well, you know, you can read these scenes sixteen times and not see them.
Especially if you typed it. Then it never, then it never shows up.
Yeah, that's great. I, I can't tell you how many times I've looked at this, and I'm looking for like, um, you know, other things, you know, like dates and names and.
Are we still talking about this?
I have one question.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, under the Middletown School Directors, I thought the two partial terms were both two years. Like Jody and my seats are both two year.
No, no.
Two remaining years of a three-year term.
No, I, I believe, so, Jody's term, um, was, uh, uh, Clarence's, and so there's one more left on that.
One more.
And so, I mean, essentially, uh, yeah, so that was one. And then, let's see, so Ryan served, Ryan's term was basically, she, she was elected last year, so that's one year, so there's two more years on that. And then the three-year terms are the normal, um, so that'd be George and Courtney, so that's how I have it figured out, um.
So can I ask about the wording on this, C and D? Cause it, to me, it looks like we're, we're missing like the, the term, unexpired term.
That, that would be helpful to have that there, I think.
I think that's usually helps in, yeah, exactly, clarifying it.
So Meredith, what would, what would you like to read, make that change?
Uh, let's go at Middletown Springs for the.
For an unexpired term of two years and the other for one year?
I think so, somewhere unexpired needs to go in there.
Okay, um, yeah.
I don't know, uh, yeah, let me, I guess it's for a, for an, an unexpired term. Or the unexpired term of two years, I guess it's the unexpired term.
Oh, um, for the, um, how about appointed? Hey Chris, Amanda says she can't get in.
She's in.
Oh, is she? Okay. Sorry.
I also didn't really, it didn't, Article Three isn't very clear to me, and maybe I'm being dense. It, it makes it sound like their terms all end next March, I mean, a year from now.
Qualification until March following the election. Yeah, it should maybe spell out that it's the March at the end of the term.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, cause when you say, uh, fa- March following the election, it makes it sound like it's a one-year term.
Until the bottom of March.
Yeah, where did that language come from? Oh, I see it. That's what we used last year. Apparently.
Well, I, maybe it's just me, but it just doesn't seem as clear as it could be.
Uh, I, I would suggest, um, from, from their election and qualification until the March at the end of the listed term.
Or, or the expired term. I mean, I get, I get why it, it ends on March and not January.
Yes.
But that's the clarification.
Under the expired, that, that works too, expired term.
Meredith and George, can you say it one more times, please?
Okay, I'll pick it up where, from where it says, from their election and qualification until the March at the end of the expired term following the election. So we would add the before March, and between March and following, we would put at the end of the expired term.
All right, I'll re- I'll read the whole thing back to you.
Yeah, yes, please.
All right, so to elect the following officers to serve from their election and qualification until the, uh, the mark at the end of the expired term, following the election and qualification of their successors.
That, that's what I intended, and I, I believe that makes sense.
Meredith?
Oh, yeah, that, it's fine.
Okay.
Awesome. I think, uh, that kind of clears it up a little bit more. I wonder if that's what it says in statute or something, is that where that came from?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I, it just doesn't make sense to the average Joe.
Yeah. Legal jargon. Okay.
Okay.
Well, we want to make a ma- a motion to approve the warning?
Um, oh, never mind, um, yeah, if, uh, I, I see Amanda and Jody are here. Uh, did either of you have any, um, uh, questions in regards to the, uh, warning?
Nope, I'm all good.
I'm good as well.
Okay.
Were, were they here when we agreed to change the wording of, uh, C and D on Article Three? I don't know when they came on.
Yes, I, I heard the changes, George.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and then a motion would be in order to approve the warning with those changes. Um, did, uh, you made those changes, uh, did you just want to, I guess, maybe screen share, just, just to make sure everything, those changes?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the formatting corrected on this document right now, Eric.
All right.
So the changes were just, uh, Article One A, changing, uh, putting an F next to four, and then on Article Three, changing the wording correct?
Yes. That's what I have. And then this is, uh, like we, uh, discussed last week, this is strictly a virtual meeting with no in-person option. So.
All right, do a screen share of the document, Eric?
Yes.
Let me see, let me see.
Yep.
All right, so Article One, the typo one A has been corrected, it's read moderator four. Then Article Three, to have the following officers to serve in their election qualification until the March at the end of the expired term, following the election qualification of, uh, successors.
So does that mean that if no one is elected to fill your spot, that you have to still uh, be a board member?
Or would we appoint someone at that point for the rest of the term?
Yeah, we'd have to appoint. I think if, if you don't run, you're not on the ballot unless, you know, you, you get write-ins or whatever, um.
But it says following the election and qualification of their successor. I don't know. Never noticed it before.
Yeah, I don't think you can make anyone.
Yeah.
Serve, I, I think that, that's my thought behind it, but again, that's why it looks like statute language to me, you know, at least the part where it's, it, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't make sense, and it doesn't quite meet what we're, I don't know, it's. I think that language is better than what was there.
You know that?
Yes.
Has the motion been made to approve it yet?
No.
I'll move to approve it as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on the warning? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the warning, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Now, I was thinking, um, tomorrow, you know, I can print this out tonight, and I can go and collect signatures. I don't know who's available, um, and I think that would be the fastest way to get it to the clerk. Um, I know last year Louis ran around and did it, but I have to go to Wells School tomorrow, I don't, you know, I could meet Amanda if she can do that, um, maybe catch Courtney, and then I can go to Middletown. Thoughts?
I could see you in the morning if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, we need at least four signatures, uh, I don't know how else to do this, so.
Um, I think I went down to the, to the town office in Wells and signed it there because she didn't need, uh, when does she have to post this?
Uh, I think she wanted it Monday.
Monday, this, you mean already Monday?
Yeah, this last Monday.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's gotta, yeah, by the twentieth, I think.
The tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I believe so. Um.
I can go down to the office there, it doesn't matter.
Okay, um, so I can, um.
We, we don't all have to sign the same copy, if I recall.
We do.
We do.
Um, we do, okay. Yeah, that'll be a problem for me then tomorrow. Um. What time will you be at Wells, Eric?
Uh, probably about seven thirty.
Seven thirty, seven thirty. Okay, I'll, I'll try to be there by seven thirty.
Okay.
I should be able to be there by seven thirty if my cars start.
All right, well, all right, that sounds like a plan to me, um, and then, I don't know, um, if, uh, you know, I like to give everyone opportunity to sign it if they wanted to as well, so I don't know if Cara or Jody, um, I would still be willing to go to Middletown as well, so.
Does it only have to go to the Wells Town Clerk? Like, once we sign it, does it get recorded at the Wells Town Clerk, not Middletown? Okay, I mean, seven thirty is, uh, drop-off time, so that's rough around here, um. So, yeah, I mean, if you're willing to swing through Middletown, I can meet you at the store pretty much all the time.
I mean, is it, is it possible to do Middletown seven thirty Friday? And Wells seven thirty, no, too late, okay.
If you don't require my signature, I mean, I don't, I don't need you to come to Middletown to, to sign it, I mean, unless you just want me to sign it. I mean, I'm happy to meet you somewhere.
I, I, I think it's a good look if we all do sign that, that, that we've agreed to this.
Um, okay.
And, and, you know, it's important to have your voice heard too, so.
I mean, I, I, I'm happy to meet you at the, at the store any, anytime, um.
Okay.
I can't get to Wells at seven thirty, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you a message and then, um, and then I can, uh, I can, I'll, I'll email you, um, Cara, um, you have your GRCSU account, right?
No, yeah.
Okay, I, I can email you my phone number, and, and then, um, they'll try and meet up tomorrow morning, and, yeah, you know, a- again, we only need four, but, you know, I think, you know, like, as George said, it, it does look good with, um, all the signatures, Amanda?
I can meet, if you need to go to Middletown first, Eric, I can meet you as late as like eight fifteen, or even come through work to Middletown, if that makes it easier with me coming to Middletown, I can go to work that way, if that helps.
Well, I got, I gotta, uh, drop my daughter off at Wells in the morning, that's why I was saying like seven thirty, um, I'll be there, so. Um, I think that just might work out better than trying to go to Middletown first and trying to get back in time. So, and, and I'll just, what I'll do is, is I'll, I'll, uh, dump her off, and then I'll go on the back behind the MWA, and, and, um, yeah, just wait, so. But, all right. Sounds like a plan, thank you, everyone. All right, so we'll move on to, um, the shift from voting from the floor to voting by Australian ballot. Now, we had to do this last year as well, um, even though the governor signed, um, leg- legislation, uh, we still have to make a motion that, um, we are, um, voting by Australian ballot. And I can't remember the exact wording of that. Chris, do you have the exact wording for?
The motion?
Yeah.
The core ballot just stated that they've made a motion to shift, uh, voting from the floor to Australian ballots.
All right, I guess, okay, yeah, I guess that covers it.
So I'll m- make a motion that we switch voting from the floor to Australian ballot for town meeting twenty twenty-two. Is it town meeting or election twenty twenty?
Wells Springs Information.
Wells Springs.
Or is it?
Annual meeting.
Annual meeting, yeah.
Yeah, Wells Springs Annual Meeting.
Annual meeting, there you go.
Cause it gets recessed until Town Meeting Day for voting.
Sounds good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes unanimous. All right, uh, the annual report. So Meredith, could you, um, go over that again?
Yeah, so, um, the, the, our town clerk, um, is suggesting, she's also a select board member, um, that they include, publish the enrollment numbers and the tax rate schedule in the town report with a sentence that says something to the effect of the full school report will be available in the following places or online. Um, and the part of, part of theirs is obviously pushing information, but also to get more people, you know, coming to our annual meeting. Um, obviously, they also want us to print them out and send them to everybody, but that's, doesn't seem a reasonable option for us, um. But, uh, I, I think, uh, if we do it, I, I don't know if Wells is interested in having that information or not, and I know she's been in discussions with Nora, but I don't know what the outcome was, so.
Nora had said that she did not need that information.
Okay. So, I don't know, I, I just felt it ought to be discussed at the board level.
Mm-hmm.
They're also, I guess, looking for the tax rate calculation page that Louis does.
Right.
But I guess part of my concern would be that it would be confusing for people who still are confused about Wells Springs being two different towns. But one school district.
Yeah, um, I run into that a couple of times, um, people saying, um, Wells School District, and.
Well, what, particularly when they're looking at numbers.
Yes. So, I, I mean, does she, she just looking for, you know, a way to get this information, um, or specific parts of the report?
Um, they're looking specifically enrollment numbers and the tax rate schedule. Um, and I, I guess that's what, uh, Louis's, uh, the ta- tax rate calculation page, that's something that was traditionally, uh, obviously, it all was in the town report in the past, um, but something that people look over.
Yeah.
Um, they're not talking about charging us to do this.
Okay, that, that was a while ago, and that's the only reason I mentioned that, um.
Well, and they're not also doing more than like, you know, this sounds like it's gonna be a two-page thing, you know?
Okay.
Well, plus, I guess, yeah, they, they're not asking for, or is the superintendent perhaps has got something for the town? Like an annual report? Chris?
We, well, we have the, the report that we put out from the Wells Springs District, and that information's in there, what's, uh.
Like a, you know, like a statement about this wonderful year.
Well, that, that, all right, that's all in our, our booklet.
Yeah.
Our, our concern is that we're replicating the materials we already have in our booklets, and so, and I know that, what, one of the concerns that Louis had was that if Middletown was receiving this information or Wells wasn't, would that create a problem that, uh, some residents were getting more information others, so we just, we had said we'd talked with the board about what their wishes were, and uh, but, and like I said, I, I, I'm not looking to replicate everything we do in our, our report, where we have uh, a report with superintendent, a report with principals, um, like I said, we, we produce that booklets, I know she was not happy that we are not sent out to her resident, but explained that that had been done for a while, twelve books.
Yeah, that's, that's just, uh, possible.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with Chris, that I, I don't think it's, it's a good look to do different things in the two towns, it should be consistent.
Could we at least put a statement in both that says where you can find?
Absolutely.
The annual, Wells Springs Annual Report?
Yeah, because you can, you, you should be able to, I mean, you can, you can get it off of the GRCS website.
I know, but, but he, if the town reports are going to every single person in each town, it would be great to have a statement somewhere in there, like on the back of the front page or somewhere, you know, table.
I, I, I agree, Meredith, the only thing is going beyond that, doing more in one town and not the other, that.
Oh, he's, he's to be in both of them.
But that statement should be in both of them, I think.
Jody, you have your hand up, I'm sorry, did you have a question or something to say?
Nope, sorry, that was from the last vote.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Uh, well, usually we do the informational pamphlets that get sent out too, that have all that. We're, we're still doing that, right, from my understanding?
Yes.
And I believe, you know, those go out to everybody.
Correct.
And that, that has the information as well.
If the board wants, we can put a statement that would be included, we can send out to, um, both Middletown and Wells, where that information can be found. So we just would need just, uh, clarification on what that statement should say. So Eric, I just wanna, I, I have a, at six forty-five, I have a, an IRA meeting as well, so I, I have uh, three special meetings that I can do for this, so I just, I, and this week has been taking, um, that long, so I just, you know.
Your, your cup runneth over.
Yeah, we're trying to get this done, so I.
All right, so, um, well, our next meeting, uh, we're gonna be reviewing our annual report as well. Um, so we can, we can, um, I think we can go over this in more detail.
So Eric, do you believe that they need for the, uh, as they send off? So Eric, do you believe that they need for the, uh, as they send off their reports and printers? If we're going to include something, they need that as they send it off?
Gotcha.
It's our our next be in February with the after their deadline.
Too late, okay.
Yeah, uh, okay, um. All right, well. I guess, um. I don't know. Um. I I wouldn't know what statement to make other than if we're sending out the those trifold pamphlets that we do ever, that we have for the last couple of years. That has all of our information where it can be obtained in it. So as far as. The towns, um, I don't know, uh. Meredith, what do you think?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I just said, um. If if we're sending out the trifold informational pamphlets that we have the last couple of years, that should have. That goes to everybody, uh, and that should have all of the information on where to find. Uh, like our annual report and stuff, but as far as the towns go, uh, do you have suggestions on? What have them put in their reports?
Well, I, you know, I think I would like to see that it the report is referenced, but if it's just not going to happen, it's not going to happen. Um, I I'm not.
Okay.
I'm going to die on my sword over this.
I mean, if we're if we're not, um. Going to provide any further information, let's leave that up to Middletown Springs to word it. If they want to put a reference in it.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Let them figure it out.
All right. I mean. Yeah.
So that means we don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
No, and and really mostly I just wanted to bring this up before the board, so we'd have a quick discussion about it and. Um. And make this decision, that's great.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you did bring it up, Meredith. I'm glad they're interested, but. Again, we're providing that information in our own format. So to duplicate some of that in one town and not the other necessarily, I think, is not a good look.
Okay, well. You know, I think, you know. Yeah, all 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 this information, you know, should be easily obtained, you know. A- as far as the annual report goes, and I would, I would think that they could reference that information from. Um, the GRCSU website. Um, I I wouldn't know what else to add. I can't, I can't think of anything else to add, so. Um. But.
Well, the other thing too, not for nothing, is we put partial information out there, and I and I don't want to hold. I don't want to belabor this because Chris has to go, but we put a little information out out of context. That might not look good either. I think they should look at the whole report that we provide.
True. Amanda?
I agree with that, and I guess that's why I'm kind of on the fence about what's the harm in just making us. That it can be found in our report.
Right, and and again, Amanda, I I would leave that up to the towns. If they want to put it in, fine. Um. Let them do it and and leave that wording up to them.
All right. All right, so we have a an executive session, um. So what we'll need is, I I think. We don't have any public here, so we can just stay in this link. Uh, if anyone just happens to. Come, then we'll we'll leave in in an effort to to make this. Quick, uh, we'll need a motion to move an executive session. Or. Collective bargaining agreement. That. Um. Nah, never mind, um. For the, uh, I guess for the, um, yeah, for negotiations and, um. Collective bargaining agreement. Uh, does someone want to make that motion?
I'll I'll also move.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, we are in executive session.